Before we move to the articles on a warrant, it is customary to recognize the chairman of the warrant committee for a motion governing the conduct of the meeting. I call upon Mr. Essetti, chair of the warrant committee, to make this motion. Mr. Essetti.
Mr. Moderator, I move that following rule be adopted for the conduct of this meeting. Any amendment to a main motion that would increase in appropriation must contain a provision for the source of funds for the increase, such that the total amount to be raised and appropriated at the meeting will not be increased.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Mr. Kinder has seconded. This is a majority vote. Is there any discussion before we vote? Okay, again, Jessica, when Jessica, when I give the word, you'll press one for yes, two for no. That's the first article. It's not numbered. If you like, I'll just do a voice vote for this. Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay. The facts pertaining to Articles One and Article Two have significant overlap. Article One, as I stated before, requests funding to develop cost estimates and architectural and engineering plans for the repair and renovation of the existing Carroll Community Center. Article Two requests funding to develop plans for a new building. Analysis of both of these articles involves reviewing substantially similar information. As a result, before we consider the motions, we will have background information presented by the Carroll Community Center Committee, by the Council on Aging, and by the Board of Selectmen. After their presentations, we will then consider the motions and open the floor up for citizen comments and questions. First, Mr. Spalding and Mr. Springett will speak on behalf of the Carroll Community Center Committee. And let me thank them, and also let me thank the prior committees, who have been working for, seems like decades, on this question, and have devoted thousands of hours. And this committee, as well as the prior committees, we thank you very much for your work. Mr. Springett and- Mr. Springett and Mr. Spalding.
Thank you, Jim. So, this is the first time we're using this technology. So there's bound to be a bug or two. So we're gonna need help with somebody loading the presentation. Okay, thank you. And thank you-
Could I ask that the lights be turned down a little, please?
Is that better? Well, thank you all for taking the time to attend this meeting. Before we begin the formal presentation, I'm going to take a minute or two to review a few things about the proceedings and the vote tonight. Some of it will be a little redundant. We are asking you to vote for the direction you would prefer the town to take with the Carroll facility, either to fully renovate the facility, or to build a new building for community use. And throughout the presentation, we provided high-cost estimates, double asterisk and highlighted, for all the options. They are based on the opinions of experts that we have worked with and consulted throughout the project. I have it on, yes? Okay. Voting options. A simple majority is required to pass an article. Tonight, you can vote yes for Article One, or no for Article Two, yes for Article Two, no for Article One, yes for both Article One and Article Two, or no for both articles. Funding. We are requesting money to develop detailed specifications for the option or options you choose tonight. If you vote yes for either Article One or Article Two, the town will require an additional $5,000. $195,000 previously authorized at earlier town meetings will be used to raise the total to $200,000. If both, if you vote yes for both articles, the town will require an additional $205,000. Again, the $195,000 previously authorized would be used to complete the total at $400,000. Assuming a continuing need for indoor public space for community use, the board believes the town facility used by residents must meet all current building codes and legal requirements. Therefore, if you do not vote to approve either article, the town will use the $195,000 remaining from previously approved Carroll renovation funds to begin to develop detailed plans and specifications for the remediation of the well-known significant maintenance items at Carroll.
Bob, you might want to put that slide back up. It reverted back to the first slide, so that people can see the-
About a year ago, the board began, again, to tackle the question, to tackle the what-to-do-out-Carroll question. Why? Well, we believe we've reached the tipping point. As many of you know, and I've just said, there are critical systems at Carroll that need to be addressed. The cost, approximately $5 million, has been confirmed by an independent capital needs assessment firm. An additional spend of this size on Carroll will de facto result in its continued use as a town community facility. I don't know what's going on. Must be very sensitive. The board thought it imperative that before that happened, the voters, you, had the chance to choose a different direction, either to fully renovate the building, or to build a new facility for community use. The committee's goal was to provide you with the information to make that, to make an informed decision about which direction the town should take. This is a high-level analysis, hopefully sufficient for you to make a decision tonight. Once a direction is set, all detailed building-specific questions will be addressed by paid professionals during Phase Two. That's good. Nope, go back. This is a tab slide. Okay, thank you. What I've learned, like some of you in the audience, I am not a community center participant. A certain board member would even accuse me of being a community center skeptic, but I won't mention her name. But I do believe in community. And after visiting all those community centers over the past six or eight months, for me, our discussion tonight is less about building options, and much, much more about our community, our values, and our vision for our future. We worked with a good group of people, and I would be remiss if I didn't mention them and thank them for all of their time and efforts. So, I would like to formally thank the members of the Carroll Community Center Project Committee for their dedication to the cause, the time they spent, and we all know, all the pulls on time, lively debates, and support throughout the project. Amy Collins, Richard Forte, Erin Rhoadat-Salvila, Leslie Godfrey-Shuddy, Terry Soboluski, and last but not least, Ford Spalding. Thank you. So now, Mr. Spalding will actually do the formal presentation.
Thank you, Bob. And thank you all for being here. I am Ford Spalding, Five Hutton Road, and Chair of the Carroll Community Center Committee. And I also thank the committee members. I would like to recognize those stakeholders who have helped us throughout this project: Luciani Birdy, Jen Cashman, Bob Cox, Fred Hamerly, Valerie Lynn, Anna Nagy, Robin Petter, Karen Pierce, Michael Schroeder, Candace Sullivan, Amit Tijani, and Ruth Townsend. And I also want to thank those in our town departments that have helped: Felicia Hoffman, Mark Galone, Janet Claypool, and Carl Warnock. Our research confirmed that Carroll is an active community center building. Between 2017 and December 2018, 25 community organizations and 300 private renters used the building. It provides space for a wide range of indoor activities and programs for a variety of participants. Carroll currently provides space for fitness, exercise, recreation, social programs, dance, meeting space for private events, outdoor activities, rehearsals, children's activities, and many, many others. It provides storage space, and also office space for our Council on Aging and Park and Recreation Departments. Our research suggests that the Carroll building is oversized at 40,000 square feet for our town's needs. Usage in the total building is what we would call light to moderate when compared to its really building capacity. The town does not have alternative space that could accommodate these programs, services, and town offices provided in Carroll. The town office has limited office space. The library, schools, and town garage are fully occupied. The Whiting Road building is in poor condition, and in fact would need major renovations, probably a tear-down and build new. Over the years, Carroll has become a mixed-use facility. Private licensees use 42% of the building. Rental programs use 28%, and town departments 30%. Our first task, given to us by the Board of Selectmen, was renovation. The estimated renovation costs we are showing you are just that, they are estimates. However, they are based on previous committee recommendations and work done by the architect at the time, Don Mills of Mills Whitaker Associates. The costs have been updated. Their reports were confirmed by an independent capital needs assessment firm engaged at the selectmen's request to provide a second option. All reports are on the town website. Our $10 million base renovation includes all the work that must be done to maintain Carroll to ensure that the building is safe, comfortable, and accessible. These options, this option includes replacing the building heating and ventilation system, complying with ADA and code requirements, updates, upgrades to mechanical and electrical engine, electrical systems, a fire suppression system with underground water storage tank, improvements to the hall stairs, improvements to corridor finishing, lighting updates, renovation of the cafeteria and kitchen, and individual room updates. We looked at enhanced renovation. We call it renovation plus. That includes all the items I've just said, and then instead of a $10 million cost, that would be approximately $13 million. Those options would increase, would include energy retrofit to include air conditioning, enhanced public entrance, including a reception station and welcoming space, renovation of the second floor of library, and reconfiguration of interior walls if needed to meet program requirements. Now let us look at what Carroll looks like today. This is our front entrance of Carroll. There are other entrances, but this is the main one. It goes into a corridor, really for the CDC, for our preschool program, with no place for somebody to know where they're going, and what the objective would be. Stairs going upstairs. One of our large activity rooms, remember, this was an elementary, well, it was a high school way back when, and then an elementary school. Another average-sized activity room, which was a classroom. The kitchen, I could hardly call it a warming kitchen, but it is a kitchen. And another large activity rooms, there used to be school committee meetings in there when chickling was there. Option two is a new building. We developed a model for a new facility by researching 15 towns. Eight were towns very much like ours, based on population, character, and tax base. Few of these towns had designated town-owned community buildings for indoor activities. They used town halls, they used schools, they used churches. Few of these towns, excuse me, the other seven were larger neighboring towns that had community buildings that provided space for indoor activities. The committee selected three towns that we felt might meet Dover's needs. Stowe, that's Stowe, Massachusetts. Stowe's population is 6,000, and their community center space for community use and storage is approximately 13,000 square feet. Wellesley has a senior population, note I said a senior population, of 6,000. Their Tolles-Parsons COA building has 13,000 square feet of use. Weston, it's a larger community, has a population of 12,000, and they have a building that's 22,000 square feet. All of the buildings that I, towns that I just mentioned, their community centers, as well as some of the other larger towns, are very, very similar in what they offer. Five to seven shared activity rooms ranging in size from about 1,100 square feet to 3,000 square feet, conference rooms, offices for recreation and Council on Aging, an entrance with a reception area, and a community social space, storage, bathrooms, hallways, kitchens, et cetera. Here are a few pictures, few examples of the buildings that we looked at. This is the Wellesley-Tolles-Parsons building. This is their, that was their reception area, where you check in, you scan a card, you know where you're going, somebody will give you directions of where to go. This is what we call a community gathering space, where you can come in, get a cup of coffee, get some tea, maybe some fruit, bagel, whatever is there. It's a place for people to meet of all generations. This is their stairway, they're going up to their second floor with an elevator right nearby. They have a game room for pool, they have conference space. This is Stowe, Stowe Building, which is their community center. It is actually shared with the fire department, they own another third of it, but this is their community center entrance. It's not that dissimilar to what you saw earlier at Wellesley. This is their large activity room, about 3,000 square feet. On the left is an, what I, we call an activity room, can be used for aerobics or what have you. And the right is a game room, a sitting room. We just looked on the left, on the left is a kitchen that is in Wellesley at the COA building, and on the right is the stove kitchen. Here we're looking at Weston's Community Center, it's older than those. This is their large activity room, it really is a stunning room, I mean, the picture shows it, but it's a stunning room, and they have weddings in there, bar mitzvahs, parties, et cetera. This is their outdoor space, so people can meet outdoors. Initially, we believed that a 13,000-square-foot new building at an estimated cost of $10 million, which would include $1 million to take down our current building, would work for Dover. However, when we met with Stowe, Wellesley, and Weston, and other towns in our survey, they had all wished, and this was sort of unanimous, they had all wished they'd build larger buildings. Based on their, this feedback, and keeping flexible space for Dover's future needs, whatever they may be, we came back and are recommending potentially an 18,000-square-foot new building, with an estimated cost of $13 million. Again, that would, to take down the existing building. This places us in the middle of those three towns that I mentioned. Some people have asked us, what does a smaller building look like on our property? So we, commission had aerials taken, and the first picture is our current Carroll building. You can see, it's sort of a H, backwards H-shaped property, and you can see they have parking up there, and I think you're all familiar with the entrance. The next picture is, we superimposed the Wellesley-Tolles-Parsons building on the property, and what that might look like. It's not where a new building would go necessarily, we just are trying to show you a comparison. So if you go back, Bob, that's what we currently have, and the new building is what it could look like. So that answers some, one of the questions that some people have asked. Let's take a look at the advantages and disadvantages of renovation and new. These are ours, you may have some different ones. The advantages, more square feet for the money for renovation, less disruption to town departments and current licensees and users, a large building provides space for future town needs. The building has a very large footprint, precluding any other use, excuse me, then this is, these are negatives. The building has a very large footprint, precluding other additional uses for the town center property of the Carols on. The building is significantly oversized for the need. Its age does raise questions about its longevity and what may be discovered once renovation is undertaken. Doing the same thing for new, the advantages, a new facility is designed to specifically meet program requirements and other anticipated uses, for about the same cost as renovation. It can maximize the use of green technology. Smaller footprint provides space for additional parking. Additional parking was something that came up when we also visited other communities. When we went to Natick, for example, and I don't know if you've seen that site, it's a wonderful site, but they are restricting some programs because they don't have enough parking. Smaller footprint provides open space for the town center for future growth, designed to maximize adaptability and efficiency. Disadvantages, more disruption for current users, and it may not include sufficient space for all current licensees. Let's look at some of the financial impacts, the tax impacts on an average household, and that's really a $1 million valuation. Please note that no matter what we decide tonight, or in the future, there is no no-cost option for this bill, for this site. If we were going to remediate, which is roughly a $5 million cost, that goes back to the 2018 town meeting, the tax increase would be about $134 per year for the average household. A base renovation, or new 13,000 square foot for $10 million, is an additional $134 over 20 years, or a total tax increase of $268. Enhanced renovation, new 18,000-square-foot building for $13 million would be in addition over the remediate of $236, or $370 in taxes, roughly a dollar per day. Well, on the subject of taxes, we talked to Jerry Lane, our town treasurer, just the other day, and he gave us some information which we thought might be helpful to you in terms of our debt costs. In 2021, the 2007 refunding bond will be paid off for the result of a decrease of $61 to the median household. That covered the town garage, protective agencies, and townhouse work of the 1990s. In FY 2023, the chickling bond will be paid off for a decrease of $56. In 2025, the region's bond, the regional school where we are now, will be paid off for a decrease of $154. So a total reduction over six years is $271. What are the next steps if you decide to renovate or build new this evening? This evening vote ends what we call Phase One. Phase Two would happen if we voted yes to one or two of the options considering. A selectmen-appointed building committee would be, would engage an owner's project management firm and an architect, who will work with the building committee to confirm objectives through a feasibility study, and then produce schematic renderings with a not-too-exceed cost, which we would bring to a future town meeting. The design phase will take approximately 12 to 18 months, culminating at a town meeting in 2021. The vote at that time will seek funding to move to design-build. The town meeting vote at that time will require a two-thirds positive vote to move forward, assuming bonding. It will also need approval by a majority vote at a townwide election. That is when you will finally approve a project to be funded. That's not tonight, that's what will happen at that time. Phase Three, final construction documents are prepared, a general contractor is hired, the GC hires subcontractors, and construction proceeds. A selectmen-appointed building committee reviews the work and approves all expenditures that go to the selectmen for final approval. This process can take up to 24 months. We want to reiterate, the decision you will make this evening is to indicate to the selection the direction you want to pursue as it relates to Carroll's future. We all have a rare opportunity to shape Dover's town center for the future and provide quality indoor space for community use. As a community, all I know is that we can do much better than we are doing now. The choice is yours. Thank you very much.
Please refrain from applause, or we'll move the meeting along more quickly. Thank you, Mr. Spalding and Mr. Springett. I would now like to turn the podium over to Mr. Cox from the Council on Aging. Mr. Cox?
I'm Bob Cox and represent tonight the Board of the Dover Council on Aging. As you know, the Dover Council on Aging has its home in the Carroll Community Center, where it has offices for consulting with seniors and the families who care for them. We use space in the community center to provide programs for fitness and health, socialization, and lifetime learning educational programs. Many of the pictures you've just seen chronicle our activities. As an important stakeholder, we have participated in the committee process which Ford has described with voice but no vote. We gratefully acknowledge the significant body of work that's been done in reviewing and updating the work of previous committees, visiting neighborhood centers, neighboring centers, and projecting estimated costs- and projecting estimated costs for the options. I should also let you know that the majority of the Board of the Council on Aging favors the renovation option. In 2018, we performed a needs analysis, which included visiting similar-sized and neighboring towns to view their senior centers and community centers. In almost all cases, as Ford has previously said, the one wish was they wished they had more space. We feel that the excess space... I guess, that's me. That's right. I'm in charge of my own... I'm in charge of my own destiny here. We feel the excess space in the current community center is a valuable asset to the town of Dover as we look for additional space for town offices and expanded programs. We will also suggest you consider the gym in the current building. It is a well-used activity space for programs such as pickleball. The dollar estimates for a new building do not include a gym, and to entertain one would lead to significantly additional costs. The current building has been populated not according to a plan, but as space was needed by potential occupants. We think that the floor plan can be better worked to reflect a more welcoming reception area, a more logical utilization of space. We believe that redesigning and renovating the existing center can create a very inviting environment, preserving the value of the space for future expansion. Having said that, as we've met as a board to discuss the specific warrant articles before us, we have concluded that there are more questions than answers. We are in a position where we don't seem to have information we need to make a decision, renovation or new. Here is what we'd like to have to make it a more meaningful evaluation. First, an articulated vision of what a Dover community center could be. We view the center as the focal point for all ages to come together for structured and unstructured activities throughout the day and into the evening. We envision spaces to meet and converse, to gather and perform, to create, to exercise, and to provide counseling. We imagine multi-generational programs taking place in a community center which looks, feels, and brings people together as a community space should. Second, comprehensive designs and renderings for both renovation and new options. We would like to review floor plans and proposed activity rooms, office space, and function rooms. We would like to see how a new facade might change the appearance of the current building or how a newly designed building might look. We'd like to evaluate how the various functions of the Dover COA would work in this environment and how our multi-generational vision could come to fruition. What I have just described is what the committee has labeled Phase Two. It's not within the scope of the mission statement establishing the committee. The warrant articles we are addressing tonight, however, are not mutually exclusive, as Bob Springett explained. The Board of the Dover Council on Aging is in favor of voting for both of the proposed articles, such that we move forward with funding to perform a comprehensive feasibility study with schematic renderings, floor plans, and defined pricing on both options. We recommend voting yes on both Article One and Article Two to move the project towards Phase Two with the requested additional $205,000 in funding to accomplish this. Onto Phase Two. In conclusion, please help us move this process forward to develop enough information to make a meaningful decision. Please vote in favor of both articles. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cox. I would now like to turn the floor over to Robin Hunter, who is the Chair of the Board of Selectmen.
Can you hear me now? So I have the really easy task of going over what we're going to vote on this evening. So here it goes. So we have a couple of choices. The first choice is we can vote yes on renovate and yes on a new building. And the total appropriation needed for this will be $205,000. The other choice is to vote no on a renovation and yes on a new building. And the appropriation for that will be $5,000. Alternatively, you can vote yes on a renovation and no on a new building. And that, too, would be an additional appropriation of $5,000. You can also vote no on both of those. And that will be an appropriation of $0. I think it's important to recognize once again, and this comment was made earlier, there is no no-cost option to the town. We have a community center or we have a building that is being used as a community center. And if both Articles One and Two are voted no, the Board of Selectmen will use the $195,000 that was appropriated at our last town meeting to conduct engineering studies so that we can answer questions about different kinds of heat designs. So those are your options this evening. I'm sure there are going to be lots of additional comments. But I would also like to thank the committee for the job they did and the committees before them for all the work they've done. And we ask you, the taxpayers, to tell us how to move forward.
Thank you, Robin. Okay, we will now move to a consideration of the two motions. I will ask Robin Hunter to make a motion with respect to Article One. Ms. Hunter?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $5,000 for the purpose of conducting feasibility studies and developing cost estimates and architectural and engineering plans for the repair and renovation of the existing Carroll Community Center, including all services incidental and related thereto.
Thank you, Ms. Hunter. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Mr. Jeffries has seconded. Now, we will now open up for discussion. Again, we have three microphones in front. If you want to speak in favor of the motion, go, please go to the yes microphone. If you want to speak in opposition, please go to the no. And if you have any questions, please go to the microphone for questions. If you are unable to come to the microphone, please raise your hand, and we'll have one of the scouts come to you. Yes? Yes, sir. Sir, Mr. Long, could you please state your name and address, please?
This whole procedure started out entirely backwards. The selectmen started out with a charge to a committee to look at two options, renovation or complete replacement. They didn't start out with deciding what do we need to do in the first place and why do we need to do it? And I would suggest that the present building is more than adequate for what we need to do and what we need to do in the future. There's plenty of space. The programs that exist in the present building are doing just fine. The only criticism is that this is an average-age public building. Like any average public building, it needs periodic renovation, needs periodic serious maintenance. That isn't going to go away. But there's no need to do a complete gut renovation of this. And there's no need to have a whole new program. The programs that exist in the building are, interestingly enough, not primarily using the building. Park and Rec has office space there, but most of the Park and Rec program is outside this building. The Council on Aging program is interesting in that the Council on Aging coordinates with the Friends of the Council on Aging. So you have various senior programs. Probably the most successful senior program is the June Cookout, which involves people of all ages, very well-attended, very popular. And all it requires is an extension cord from the building and the use of the restrooms. In the fall here, there's a harvest brunch. And that occurs at the American Legion. Why doesn't it occur at the Carroll Center? Well, the American Legion, you can buy a drink when you have your brunch. That seems to be popular. And as far as general community interest, one of the most innovative and very popular new programs that's occurred in Dover is the Springdale Field Function. That unfortunately had to be canceled this year because of East Wind Equine encephalitis concerns. But when you look at that function, great community function, terrific turnout, all ages, all generations, terrific enthusiasm. But look at it. No government involvement, no building involved, and of course, sale of wine and beer.
Mr. Long, wrap it up, please. Your two minutes is up.
This is what counts for community. These are the kind of programs that go on. The building is fine. It just works great for what we do with it now. And we don't need more. We don't need to spend millions of dollars on upgrading something that is already perfectly adequate.
Thank you, Mr. Long. With the record show, that's Charles Long, Walpole Street, Dover. Thank you. Do we have somebody? Do we have anybody up in the audience who's not able to come down? Okay, I see up in the upper section, right here.
That's McGaw, 23 Valley Road. I have to respond to what was just said. Charlie, I like you very much, but there's a few things that need to be clarified. I am an active participant in many of the COA activities. I'm not that old a senior, but I am a senior. But I'm one of 25% of this town who are seniors. So we have a significant presence and a significant need to address seniors who have, in many cases, lived here for many years, have paid our dues, have put our children through the schools, have voted through all the things that younger families want, and now find ourselves forgotten a bit. The town does provide a relatively small space in the Carroll School for the Council on Aging and a relatively small amount of funding that the town provides for the director and some of the basic needs. However, there is a second organization. That organization is the Friends of the Council on Aging, which I am, at current, a member of. So I know both organizations. The Friends organization, like the Friends of the Library, has one function primarily, and that is to raise funds that we can provide to the Council on Aging to cover expenses which are not covered by the town. And that's what we do. The summer barbecue is something that the Friends pay for. We get a little money from the people who come, but we only charge small amounts. It doesn't cover the food, et cetera. So we have to cover that. The brunch is our fundraiser to raise money so that we can give it to the town for programs like lifetime learning, transportation for many of the trips that we try to provide, supplies for some of the needs. Recently, we've put a large chunk of money as available for renovating space that we help pay for and for creating more up-to-date facilities with furnishings.
Ma'am, please wrap it up. Your two minutes has expired.
And that's a separate issue that isn't provided for by the town. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Please refrain from clapping. Could I have, how many yeses, how many nos? How many questions do we have now? How many yes? Okay, if I have one of the yeses, then we'll have one of the nos. And then a question. Yes, sir. Go ahead. Name and address, please, sir?
David Chase.
Speak closely into the mic.
Hello, hello?
Yeah.
There you go. David Chase, 65 Main. I'm in support of this article and the second article. I agree with Bob and Council of Aging. I think both of them provide the opportunity to develop the vision first. I think that's the first priority. I mean, to my perspective, that's a multi-generational, dedicated, and common areas. And I would include not just indoor, but I would look at outdoor space. So I think the first step is developing that vision, then to develop both options to be able to provide, back to the town meeting, how well or limitations each options support that common vision. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody wish to speak in opposition? Anybody have questions? Questions, sir?
My name is Andy Harrington, 2 Forest Street. What I see is we've got money for studies we're talking about only. But what happens after this? It's pretty clear if we vote no money, we're just doing the minimum renovation. I understand that, okay? But what if we only vote for one study and we don't like what they say? Does that mean we then say, oh, we really should also get that other study with the other way of doing it, and we delay it another two years? Okay? There's no discussion of this. If there is, if there is... It seems like we need to do something fairly soon that wasn't made real clear. But it sounds to me that if we're talking about spending multiple millions of dollars and $200,000 or an extra $200,000 to make it clear what our options really are, makes sense because if we don't do enough checking, we're, you know, then what do we do next? Okay? If we don't like the options that are provided. So what happens if we have a study and we don't like it is not been covered at all?
Thank you, sir. Mr. Spalding or Mr. Springett? Would you like to respond to that question? Mr. Spalding, would you like to respond to that question? The question was, what happens if the town doesn't like the study that you present at the subsequent town meeting?
Then we're right back where we started and where we are tonight. And the selectmen will have to maintain the building.
Thank you, Mr. Spalding. Any other questions? Sir, Mr. Clark? Name and address, Mr. Clark?
Gerald Clark, Chair of the Board of Health, Valley Road. I'm afraid that there's been some misconception here by some of the comments. The no option on both is not a no-cost issue. I think we've had enough studies to show that the building is not compliant in many ways. We, the Board of Health, ruled that the kitchen cannot be used for health reasons. I, myself, caught Representative Denise Garlic almost falling off of the supposedly accessible front entrance as she misstepped because it is unsafe. There is no ability for elderly or other individuals with issues of accessibility to enter the building from the rear. The initial discussion two years ago made clear that if we don't do anything, if we continue to use the building, if we spend minimal money, we are still obligated by state law to go forward and spend ultimately somewhere between $4 and $6 million because we don't want to do anything. Because the heating system is an old 1928 steam boiler system that's been partially converted. Parts can't be found. Somehow, this hasn't come out in the discussion, and I don't understand that.
Mr. Clark, was there a question there? Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Clark. Does anybody have a question? Yes, ma'am.
My name is Julie Bernstein, and...
My name is Julie Bernstein, and I'm...
Hang on a second. We have to get that out. I speak right into it.
I'm Julie Bernstein, and I live at Two Oaks Circle. And I guess my question is to the community, because I'm thinking about the fact that one, our population as a whole is aging, which means down the line in 10 or 15 years, we're going to have more older folk in the community. And we now have a spry, youthful group of older folk who want to stay in this community, and I do believe that they have a certain amount of wisdom to impart to all of us and to our youth. So as we think about this, I'm thinking, how do we make it possible to sustain an ever older group of people? And how do we also create a facility that helps the younger generation to interact more with the older generation? And I guess my other question is, I know that some people in the community are going to Medfield for things like swimming, because we don't have that available here, and that's something that's really helpful to older people who have arthritic conditions, et cetera. And I'm wondering if which of these options gives us room to maybe include something like that in the future, because maybe that will be something that we will want.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Spalding, do you care to respond?
Well, I think my response is, we can do a lot better than we're doing right now, and I think that's what we should be doing. If you're talking about swimming or gyms or that kind of thing, that all can be done. The question is, is what are you willing to pay for and what do you want? And I think that's the real question that needs to be asked, and that's what we'll do under Phase Two. We'll be talking to you on that.
Thank you, Mr. Spalding. Would anybody like to speak in opposition? Ma'am?
Karen McCoy from 26 Farm Street. I think it's egregious that we used Wellesley as a comparison town. It's 30,000 population, not 6,000. We don't have 6,000 elderly here, and I think that's really unrealistic for us to use it as a comparison town. The second question is, if we're talking about the elderly, how many people actually use the facilities there? I'm much more interested in the multi-generational thing. As an elder person, I'm 70, my husband's 76, we don't want any services from the town. And even as we age, I mean, the most that we might want are rides for seniors. We don't want a social kind of a thing. So how many of our seniors really want that? How many of them use that at this time? I am really, along with Charlie Long, in saying, let's go with a known entity. We've got four, six, maybe seven million, and just keeping it up. We've got lots of space. We don't know what we need. Why should we go for the unknowns of renovation to have some sort of a new Taj Mahal or an even smaller Taj Mahal, which really limits us? I don't think that we should go for either of these options.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else speaking in opposition? Question, ma'am? Well, please approach the microphone and state your name and address.
I'm not sure that this is clearly in opposition. Joanne Fisher, 6 Clover Circle. I speak from a unique perspective. I was a full-time employee at the Council on Aging in a neighboring town for 20 years. And I'd like to say that the building I worked in was very beautiful. It was a renovated building. The problem that we found with a renovated building is, no matter how well the job is done, and believe me, it was done beautifully. Ultimately, the old services in the building, the furnace, the windows, the asbestos under the floor, the things seeping up from years and years of a building being in there. The building I was in was built in 1937, caused a lot of problems, a lot of sickness. And although we can't prove it, we were too small a sample to be significant, there was an excessive amount of sickness, particularly among employees. So that is something you really have to think about in renovation. An old furnace sheds, floors decompose, walls decompose, sometimes other things had been in the ground before the building was ever built. And I would warn everyone in voting to think about that. Also, think about the fact that a renovation means much greater upkeep much sooner. I would say to anyone who says they don't need a senior center, they don't want one, it would be wonderful if we all had a crystal ball and knew what we needed and what we will need. I'd like to think that my 20 years of work provided some service and some pleasure to some people. So I don't know if this is a no or a yes, but just a warning. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else who's been waiting? Yes, ma'am? Yes, okay, come in, and Ms. Weld, you'll follow her, okay?
I just have a few questions.
Speaking to the microphones.
I have some questions. Is there going to be a cafe? Is there going to? No, really. Is there going to be a cafe in either a renovation or a new building?
Mr. Spalding.
You know, a place for the little kids and the elderly.
The answer is, there could be.[972.13][972.13](Laughter).
Is it accounted for?
We haven't designed it, and we haven't gotten that far, but the answer is, is yes, there could be.
There could be, but is it financially accounted for?
Not at this stage. That would be in the next phase.
Okay. And then, what is the revenue from rentals right now?
I don't have the exact number, but I know that the current lease is pay basically the operating costs of the building.
And which is what?
Let me ask the Board of Selectmen if they have that figure. Chris?
Yes.
Chris, this is Chris Dwelly, the Town Administrator.
So for the last several years, they have been balanced, and the revenue and expenses have been, actually, the revenue is a little bit higher, but they've been around $90,000 a year. And in terms of the cafe, what we did during the analysis was, we basically looked at all of the services provided, and we cobbled together the space for a vanilla community center. And since all of those community centers that we visited had either a cafe and welcoming space, then we have the space to do that here.
With a new building?
With both.
Either way, there'll be room. And then, in my opinion, the COA is shabby, and Janet Claypool's office is minimal. Will there be more space for the COA?
Again, the models that we use. So we're looking at space, right? And so the space that's provided in either option should accommodate the appropriate space for the occupants.
So there'll be room for classes, there'll be room for computer use, there'll be room for Janet Claypool to have a nice office?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Ma'am, could you state your name and address, please, for the record?
My name is Iva Hayes, and I live at 18 Meadowbrook.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, Ms. Weld?
Kathy Weld, 29 Main Street. I've been involved in various ways since 2000 in the discussion and deliberations about what to do with the Carroll. At this juncture, I definitely favor renovation of the Carroll over building new, although I like Bob Cox's suggestion that we vote yes on both. But whether it's a single integrated project or a Phase One starting with the fundamental and necessary infrastructure improvements that lost in 2018, but phasing that might make things more affordable for a certain part of our population that might find the price tags too high. First and foremost, by reasons, a town should never give up municipal space unless that space is truly irredeemable, and that is not the case here. Carroll is an active building, as you heard, with good bones and plenty more life left, even 100 years or more if properly maintained. We need only to look around us at all the old brick buildings in New England that are well into their second and third centuries of life because they've been cared for, maintained, updated, repurposed, or enhanced in ways that, in the case of the Carroll, could radically change the mixed reviews by users. In the past 10 years, the structural integrity of the Carroll has been restored and its building envelope sealed, all in projects approved by you voters at annual town meetings. During this timeframe, we've had engineers crawling all over the building, assessing conditions, noting possible issues, preparing for each of these projects. Concerns have been raised at recent forums about possible unknowns in a renovation, but at Carroll, most if not all the issues are already known and have either been successfully addressed or funds included for them in project planning. Secondly, if new-build communities wish they had built larger facilities, I suspect we would wish the same, which is why we should keep the space we have and make it more functional and welcoming and so attract increased numbers of programs and users. Environmentally sensitive technologies are not confined to new builds. They can and would be used in a renovation as well. And there's plenty of room for additional parking on the current lot without reducing the size of the building. Renovating the Carroll preserves the look of the town center. Its brick is a look that belongs. In short, I believe it's shortsighted to reduce the amount of space we currently have for community and municipal use. The new build scenario gives us less than half the usable space at the Carroll at the same estimated cost as, and a great deal more disruption than, enhancing and making use of what we already have.
Please wrap it up.
Thank you. I urge you to support Article One. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody seated who is not able to come down who would like a microphone to come to them? I see a hand in the back here. Please raise your hand again, ma'am. There you go. Name and address, please.
Maureen Dill, Brook Road, Board of the Council, I'm on the Board of the Council on Aging. I don't have a question, but I would like to just say something. If you were to walk into the Council on Aging room right now, in the corner, you would see ceiling tiles coming down. You would see water stains on the wall. You would also see the paint peeling off the wall. And why is this? It's because a water pipe burst. That's all I want you to think of. A water pipe burst. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Down in the front, any nos? Anybody speaking in opposition?
I have a question.
Yeah, I have a question, okay. And then the gentleman next to him. Okay.
Kevin Ban, 7 Pleasant Street. I'd like to move the question.
Okay.[1369.04][1369.04](Applause). Question has been moved. That is not debatable motion. Do I hear a second? Okay, motion has been made to move the question, and it has been seconded. We will now proceed to a vote on whether we should move the question. And Jessica, can you tell me when I should? Is it okay to vote now? One for yes, move the question. Two for no, do not move the question. You may vote now.[1398.04][1398.04](Laughter). We will now proceed to vote on Motion One. This is a majority vote. All those in favor of Motion One, that is, to appropriate funds to study renovation, you'll be pressing one for yes. If you're opposed to the first motion, you'll be pressing two for no. And Jessica, you'll give me the sign? Motion carries 236 to 114. On to the second motion. Ms. Hunter.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $200,000 for the purpose of conducting feasibility studies and developing cost estimates and architectural and engineering plans for the construction of a new community center, including all services incidental and related thereto.
Thank you, Ms. Hunter. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Mr. Jeffries has seconded. Thank you. So the motion now is to fund a study for a new building. And again, if you are unable to come to the front, please raise your hand if you would like to speak. Lady has been waiting very patiently in front. Would you like to speak, ma'am, first? And if you could state your name and address, please.
Sierra Bright, 55 Smith Street. I'd like to ask my question about Question One, if I could.
Okay.
Will the renovation include renewable energy, heating, cooling, geothermal, heat pumps, solar, et cetera?
Okay. The question is for Mr. Spalding, will it include renewable energy? And just for the record, I'm allowing this because both of these motions are so closely related that the information that pertains to Question One also pertains to Question Two. Ford?
I would hope so.
Okay, thank you. I have another question.
Okay, ma'am, go ahead.
About Question Two. So I very thoroughly scoured the website and the pamphlet that you sent out, and it said that the lessees' income was about $5,000 more than the upkeep of the building. If some of the lessees have to be let go because this building is of a smaller size, how is the maintenance, upkeep, and utilities going to be paid for in the new building?
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Spalding.
That would be determined, again, in Phase Two, and that's really in the hands of the Board of Selectmen.
Thank you, Mr. Spalding. Any others persons wishing to speak? Sir?
Matthew Schmidt, 27 Pine Street. On the question about the expenses and the revenue, I actually have those figures at my seat over there, and I can get them if anybody's interested. But the revenues outweigh the expenses currently, thanks to the tenants. As a member of CMAC, I'd like to make you aware of a few enlightening facts that have been overlooked or distorted by innuendo. They might have a bearing on your decision. Fact one, some will say Carroll is an old school building serving only a few. Numbers bear out the opposite. Even the study committee will admit the vibrancy is palpable. There are also a lot of old buildings in town. Should they go, too? The entire 1971 addition has movable walls, allowing for adaptability to future use. Carroll can successfully be repurposed. Fact two, some well-meaning individuals have tried to sabotage research of CMAC by stating that improving the old building will lead to continuous and exorbitant costs, and that demolition will cost only $1 million instead of the $2 million that professionals quoted. Fact three, we know Carroll currently lacks the support of most taxpayers. CMAC carefully reviewed previous studies, the lack of appetite for an expensive rebuild, and realized the only practical option was to complete the necessary improvements. By doing so, we concluded the town could roll out its vision as opportunity arose. Fact four, comparisons to the Wellesley Toll Center are irrelevant. It's only a senior center. The CCC serves all generations. Fact five, reduce the size because we don't need the space allotted to the current tenants, they say. Current tenants pay the annual operating cost of the entire building, saving taxpayers almost $100,000 per year. The CDC alone has paid over $1 million to Dover in their tenancy, while over 50% are Dover schoolchildren. Yes, I'd love a new state-of-the-art building, but face it, folks, unless someone comes forth personally with a huge chunk of seed money, Dover taxpayers, most of whom don't even care about the CCC, are going to balk at a $10 million, let alone a $15 million price tag for full-scale reno or renewal.
Please wrap it up, sir.
Reality dictates the continuing message, which by default has ironically worked over the last 20 years, namely, to do improvements as we go and let the users build upon them. The third option was conceived to avoid the disruption and delay that a major reno, let alone a rebuild, would cause. Think of the added cost of moving and housing current stakeholders. And have we forgotten about our green community obligation? And have we forgotten about our green community obligation to reduce our energy waste? There are grants now available to offset renovation expenses. And those who are environmentally sensitive
Please wrap it up, sir.
in favor of a new building overlook the fact that the 42,000 square feet of waste must go to a landfill somewhere, unless they imagine that the town is prepared to bear the added expense of recycling the mountain of destruction. In sum, the third option...
Sir, sir, I'm sorry, I'm going to have to stop you. Thank you, sir. Ma'am, name and address, please.
My name's Tracy Mannion, 90 Claybrook Road. Grew up here in town. One of the reasons we came back was our wonderful school systems. And I'd like to thank the previous gentleman for pointing out that the CDC presently pays $6,000 a month for the rent. It is the only full-time preschool we have in this community, a community that's only really growing larger. More families are moving in with small children. There was a statistic recently that close to 70% of women now work either part of full-time in our community. We need a full-time preschool. We don't have one. If CDC doesn't have the space, if we cut down the size of this building, many of the things that have been offered right now, including that preschool, may not have the space, especially for moving town offices and et cetera that need more space. So please don't cut down the size of the school, or the size of the Carroll School where I went. We need this. There's, our community is only getting bigger. And to take away that full-time preschool and to have to send our children somewhere else isn't, isn't what we moved here for. We moved here to send our kids to school here, and that includes the preschools. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, sir. Name and address, please.
Gabriel Burt, I live at Nine Tower. The CDC and really the Carroll Community Center are part of why we moved here two years ago. It's actually been a fantastic way for us with preschool-aged children to meet other young families that have moved here and to become part of the community, not just through the CDC, but through the activities that they run. Coach Pete, et cetera. I'm in the building, in the gym, Kung-Fu that goes on in the big activity room with, has the kitchen. I had a question about the square footage that is currently allocated to the city, basically. I think I heard that it was 30% of the 40,000 square feet.
Mr. Spalding?
And would that not, with the additional 5,000 requested, total the entire new building?
Mr. Spalding, if you could respond to that?
I'm not sure I fully understand the question.
How many square feet would be allocated to the city with the new building?
That has, that would be come up in Phase Two. We have not done any design work. That would, you do that after a feasibility study, then you're going to do the schematic design work.
How many square feet does the city currently use in Carroll?
It said it's about 30, 20, 30% of 40,000 square feet. Of usable space, it's 30% of 26,000.
Okay. So it's around 8,000 plus an additional five that's requested is a significant percentage of the new building, it sounds like.
Correct.
Okay. That's all I had. Thank you.
Moderator, can you move the question?
You can when you're recognized, Mr. Crowley. I'll come right back to you. The reason, the reason that, please sit down, sir, I will come back to you. Ms. Hunter passed me a note. She wanted to comment on a question that was asked, and then I will come back to you, Mr. Crowley. Ms. Hunter?
So I wanted to clarify on the comment that was made about the rents covering the operating expenses. What the rent covers is utility costs only of the building, not the full operating expenses of the building.
Okay. Now, Mr. Crowley? Okay. Mr. Crowley has moved the question. Do I hear a second? Okay. The motion to move the question has been seconded. This is a non-debatable motion. We will move directly to a vote. If you are in favor of moving the question, you'll press one for yes. If you're opposed, you'll press two for no, and you may vote now. Very good. We, we will now move directly to vote on the motion with respect to funding the study of a new building. This is a majority vote. If you are in favor of funding the study, you will press one for yes. If you're opposed, you will press two for no. And you may vote now. The motion carries 264 to 92. Mr. Ossetti?
Mr. Moderator, I move that this meeting be dissolved.
The motion has been made to adjourn the meeting. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.